Good evening. The December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two council meeting of the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
I'm here.
Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Selly? Dr. Selly?
Here.
And Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
Thank you.
Will everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance? A pledge allegiance is required by the United States of America, to the republic, which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, in the great and justice for all. Thank you. The Long Branch Mayor, City Council, and Administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Madam Clerk, certification, please.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. And now we will be doing something a little different tonight. During our presentation portion, we will have police swearing-in ceremony, and I would now like to turn this over to Director Broughton.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council President. This evening, we're here to swear in Sergeant Sheldrick. I'd like to welcome Sergeant and his family to our meeting this evening. Thank you for coming. And I'd also like to welcome members of the Long Branch Police Department. We have a sergeant here as well, and members of the Long Branch Fire Department. Thank you for coming to support Sergeant Sheldrick. Counsel, I'd also like to thank you for instituting this process and allowing the sergeants and members of the police department to have this opportunity to come before you to be sworn in and assume their new role within the department. This is a really, really big moment for any officer who's being promoted. So, thank you very much for allowing your officers this opportunity. So, without further delay, we're gonna get Sergeant Sheldrick sworn in. Can you just stand first? I'd like to call up, as we wait for everyone to get in position, Rabbi Si Stanway of Temple Beth Miriam for an invocation.
We give thanks to the divine power in the universe that inspires us to achieve great heights of accomplishment and honor within our community. This evening, we acknowledge that power as Sergeant Sheldrick is sworn in to serve our Long Branch community with integrity and focus. Oh God, we ask that you continue to inspire Sergeant Sheldrick to serve our community and pray that his colleagues and friends and family continue to be inspired by his good works. On this day of celebration, we pray that you look over his family as he fulfills his dreams. Praised are you, our God.
And that was Sergeant Sheldrick's mother holding a Bible for him. We'll now have Sergeant Sheldrick come to the center and receive the penny of his badge from his wife Christina, assisted by their son Carter.
Good job.
Thank you, Sergeant. He is now officially a sergeant. He will now receive his orders from Captain Silverio and Captain Bard. I'd like to now give you a little bit of information. I'd like to read the bio of Sergeant Francis Patrick Sheldrick. Very impressive. Sergeant Francis Patrick Sheldrick has been promoted to the rank of sergeant and will take this oath of office this evening, or has taken it this evening. Sergeant Sheldrick is here with his lovely wife Christina, son Carter, who is two years old, mother Carrie Sheldrick, sister Maureen Wilmerton with her son Eric, and his in-laws, Thomas and Rita Katron. Sergeant Francis Sheldrick graduated from Central Regional High School in Berkeley Township in two thousand and eleven and went on to earn his bachelor's degree in criminal justice in two thousand and fourteen from New Jersey City University, same place I graduated. He has begun working towards a master's degree at Seton Hall University studying human resources development and training. Sergeant Sheldrick joined the Long Branch Police Department as a seasonal Class One Special Police Officer in two thousand and fifteen and returned as a Class Two in two thousand and sixteen. He performed duties for the department as both a Class Two Special Officer and a dispatcher until being hired as a full-time officer on June seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. On September first, two thousand and twenty-two, Sergeant Sheldrick was assigned to the Special Investigations Unit in the capacity of detective, where he served until his official promotion to police sergeant on November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. In addition to his regular duties, Sergeant Sheldrick has successfully trained three officers under the department's field training program and remains an active member of the Long Branch Police Department Tactical Response Team. In two thousand and eighteen, Sergeant Sheldrick was presented with an Honorable Service Award for his recovery of a stolen handgun during a routine motor vehicle stop and was the recipient of the prestigious Two Hundred Club Valor Award in two thousand and twenty-two for an incident involving another recovered weapon and an arrest following a foot pursuit. Sergeant Sheldrick is an avid baseball fan, was a star baseball player in high school, and enjoyed success as a collegiate baseball player. In June, two thousand and seventeen, he was inducted into the Central Regional High School Hall of Fame. Additionally, he spent three seasons coaching high school and middle school baseball. Along with his beautiful wife Christina and son Carter, he is excitedly awaiting the arrival of their second son. So, let's give him a hand. Would you present the rose to his family, please? Thank you. Thank you very much, Captain. I just wanna just add a couple remarks, and then we'll have a benediction. This period of moving from being a patrol officer to a sergeant is probably one of the most important periods in a law enforcement officer's career. Sergeant Sheldrick took an exam recently with probably about forty other officers. An exam that he probably had a study for about six months to do this exam. It's a lot of work, a lot of dedication, time away from the family. Sergeant Sheldrick, a dedicated officer, came out number one, number one on the exam. Takes a lot of dedication to do that. So, you know the things that you have to do. I've seen, you know, some of your work. I know that you're a dedicated person, you're dedicated to this town. I look forward to you continuing to do that, and I look forward to you moving up the chain as you move forward in your career. Okay? I want to say thank you very much to the family. Thank you so much for allowing us to have him, for your sacrifice as well. Thank you to the Long Branch officers who are here to support him, who sacrifice every single day for the residents of this community. They put their lives on the line every single day, and we're ever grateful to each and every one of you. So, thank you very much and wish you the best in your career, and Godspeed. And lastly, we'll have a benediction from Reverend Aaron N. Gibson from Second Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Almighty God, and our Father, we come to say thank you as we have concluded now this ceremony, this promotion ceremony and swearing-in. We thank you, Lord, for this sergeant who is now about to take on added responsibilities. We pray for his protection. We pray that you'll watch over him and keep him, along with all of the officers of Long Branch. And we thank you, Lord, for our fire department. We thank you for our city officials. We ask that you would bless each of them as they carry on responsibilities of great authority. Now, Lord, I ask that you would bless us as we prepare to finish the ceremony and go on to the business of the city. We thank you, and we ask these blessings in your name. Amen.
I'd like to turn it back over to Council President Ruth.
And congratulations, Sergeant.
Congratulations.
Best of luck. I need a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly? Dr. Selly?
Here.
And Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration. An ordinance designating parking prohibited on Mark Drive, rescind. This ordinance was introduced on November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, and rescinds the prohibited parking restrictions for the entire length of Mark Drive on both sides. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If any member of the public has any comments to make, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Clearly for the record, you will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Isaac Sutton. I live at Twenty-seventh Stuyvesant Place in Long Branch, New Jersey. I am here representing Shore Apothecary currently. Shore Apothecary has won a conditional retail license.
You know that this has to do with an ordinance to rescind the parking restriction?
Oh, no. It has to do with a different ordinance. Sorry.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. Anyone else? I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the second reading of ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-two entitled an ordinance designating parking prohibited on Mark Drive, rescind. I need a motion to adopt on second final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-two entitled an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of block four thirty-six zero one, lot twenty-seven on the official tax map of the city of Long Branch. This ordinance authorizes the agreement between the Oliver Byron Engine Company, number five, and the city of Long Branch to voluntarily convey block four thirty-six point oh-two, lot twenty-seven, located at forty-six Atlantic Avenue, and include a ten-foot right-of-way located on block four thirty-six, lot thirty-four. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law, and set the public hearing for December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
She said yes.
And Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading for ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-two entitled a bond ordinance providing for various two thousand and twenty-two capital acquisitions and improvements for the city of Long Branch and the county of Mamas, state of New Jersey, appropriating five million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, therefore including state of New Jersey Department of Transportation grants, an amount of nine hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two, and authorizing the issuance of four million, six ninety-eight, nine eighty-six bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof. This bond ordinance provides for various capital acquisitions and improvements consisting of reconstruction of the entire length or portions there to Westwood Avenue and Second Avenue. Two, various improvements to city-owned buildings and the library. Three, purchase and replacement of garbage trucks. Four, purchase of various equipment and improvements to the city firehouses. Five, purchase and replacement of public works vehicles and equipment. And six, the purchase and replacement of traffic lights for various locations within the city. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law, and set the public hearing for December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty-two entitled ordinance of the city of Long Branch established in chapter seventy, third-party payroll dispersment. Summary. This ordinance establishes chapter seventy entitled third-party payroll dispersment in the city code, which formally approves the principle of a third party having access to city fund, formally assigning the responsibility to an official to oversee the process by enacting an ordinance and approving all contracts or extensions. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law, and set the public hearing for December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Thank you. Public participation for resolutions and all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If there is anyone in the audience that has a comment to make, please step to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening. Sorry about before. My name is Isaac Sutton. I reside at Twenty-seventh Stuyvesant Place in Long Branch, New Jersey. I am here for Shore Apothecary. We have applied for a conditional license in New Jersey for a Class Five retail license for cannabis use. I'm here just to understand more about the process and understand what direction we should go about. I don't know if there is any idea of where we should proceed in the future.
I guess I can explain it to you publicly, as I've explained it to you privately and explained it to your attorney, but Long Branch only allows one of each license.
Sure.
So, what you have actually requested is not strictly an application to the city. You've asked us to issue a resolution of support.
Correct.
As you know, I made a request for information. You provided us with that information. We're going through it, and at some point in time, the council will make a decision as to, you're not the only person who has submitted.
Of course.
We'll have to make a determination as to who gets a resolution to support.
Got it.
So, that's the process. Same process. By the way, I told you, I've told you before.
I know. There was just a lack of correspondence over, you know, a couple of weeks, four months.
I responded to all of your correspondence, so I'm not really sure, but so that's.
All right. That's your hearsay, but it's okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Request one-minute notification. Vincent LaPore, Thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Tonight's agenda, resolution two ninety, redevelopment agreement with Ashler Place, requesting a no vote because of the continued abuse by this city, abuse of the use of redevelopment zones for spot zoning purposes. Resolution two ninety-five concerning the Jersey Urban and Community Forestry Grant. That's a cruel joke. To Environmental Commission liaisons, Councilwoman Wittes, Councilwoman Vogt, voted on ordinance two twenty-two at the beginning of the year to abandon an urban forest for a parking lot for the West End Orthodox Sephardic Torah. Hypocrites, that's what it comes down to, as well as the Environmental Commission that was notified of the matter and did nothing to protect urban forestry. Resolution two eighty-five, Frank LaRaca, conflict judge, municipal court, requesting a no vote. I know from firsthand experience what this character's about. Incompetent, pay-to-play, criminal, requesting a no vote, Frank LaRaca. Last evening, most in this city witnessed the smashing of longtime generational residents again with a development project at the Inkwell site, three-and-a-half-story, twenty-two-unit luxury rental building with corner commercial operation. Landing board voted on this application in accordance with the West End Development Overlay, otherwise known as WE-DO. I and others fought WE-DO at its inception years ago because it essentially legitimized the corruption and existence of an illegal house of worship at that time, the Monocum Shabbat, that was pursuing development plans. Now, the residential residents of West End are feeling the fallout of WE-DO. It's as wrong today as it was then. As a result of WE-DO, the following occurred with the Monocum. Two parsonages were allowed to exist, tax-exempt in this city, for the Monocum Learning Institute. Ninety-one Pullman Avenue, El Baran, assessed at one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred dollars, paying no taxes, under the Monocum Learning Institute name. Also, under the Monocum Learning Institute, five seventy-two Westwood Avenue, assessed at one million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, paying no taxes. Both of these exemptions granted by Pallone, Selly, and the Schneider team. This past October, two notice of settlements were titled, again, to the Monocum Learning Institute, residentials. One notice of settlement concerned two twenty-five Brighton Avenue, unit three zero two. The other notice of settlement concerned two twenty-one Brighton Avenue, unit three zero four. We're watching, counsel. We're watching you closely.
One-minute warning.
We know the inception of the West End Development Overlay was based in corruption. We know these tax exemptions for those two residents, considered parsonages, was corrupt. We're looking at the purchase of these two residences now that I just mentioned and seeing if council's going to award them tax abatements as well, two additional residences for the Monocum Learning Institute. We're watching. Junk government.
Is there anyone else? I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will now ask Madam Clerk.
Hey, counsel, president, just two things. One is that the Asher resolution needs to come off the agenda as we discuss in closed session because we're holding that until the next meeting. And I also just wanted to comment for a second on something that Mr. LaPore just said so that it's clear because, as always, he comes up and I don't want to say, well, he lies usually about what the law is.
The mic is not on.
Oh, be on. There you go. The tax exemptions for religious organizations are provided for in New Jersey law. Those applications are made to the tax assessor. The council doesn't really, doesn't have a role in that. So, the tax assessor is, obviously, he's a statutory officer, and he has an obligation to review those applications. If they meet the criteria, the property is listed as exempt. So, when Mr. LaPore gets up and says, "You granted another tax exemption," the answer is, the New Jersey Legislature granted that exemption, and the tax assessor is literally an agent of the state legislature for reviewing those applications. They don't come before council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we're gonna remove two ninety dash twenty-two?
Correct.
We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda and remove resolution two ninety dash twenty-two. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to appoint the fellow member of the Long Branch Fire Department, Francis Lapolos, Atlantic Active.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yeah.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Okay. I need, let me see. I need a motion to approve the listed application, renewal of various taxi cab owners' licenses for two thousand and twenty-three. So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
She said yes.
And Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Okay. For the miscellaneous business, for the good of the order, Councilman Dangler?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you. As the holiday season approaches, we won't see each other before Christmas and a few of the other holidays, so I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday, a safe holiday. And please begin to dress warm. Don't stay outside much more than you have to because it is winter time in New Jersey. Also, in regards to the holidays, we'll be with our families and friends, but please keep in mind masks are more optional now as opposed to mandatory. But please stay safe so you can enjoy your families in a healthy environment. I wish you all a good, safe holiday, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Viera?
Yes. Thank you for coming tonight. I'd like to see the chief back there, the Chief Guarda. Well, great job, director, with the presentation, and I want to congratulate Sergeant Sheldrick for his promotion and his family. And I want to wish everybody a happy holidays and safe, and stay safe. And thank you again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vogt?
Thank you, Council President. So, I want to wish everyone...
So, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday, and in doing that, I just want to tell you that today was just a beautiful day, and I want to give you three reasons why it was a beautiful day. First of all, Director, to have the ceremony tonight of the swearing-in is just a wonderful experience for us all to see, and certainly to see our officers here who take such good care of our city is inspiring. So, that was reason number one. Reason number two, you may remember that one of our usual attendees talks about an organization that she belongs to, which is called Food Not Bombs, and they provide food down at the train station to people who are in need, often people who don't have homes and have different types of needs, and it's, the organization does very good work, and through a grant that we were informed about, we were able to help provide food for, through her organization. So, that's actually happening this week. They're down there on a Wednesday night, and it was, again, heartwarming and inspiring to be able to support her organization through the grant that we had learned about. Third and last was most heartwarming. And we, in Long Branch, we have just a spectacular program that's called the Recovery Diversion Program. It's run through our municipal court. It is a program that, in effect, gives people who have, who qualify in terms of the requirements for the program, gives them a second chance at recovery from whatever their addiction may be, if it's drugs, if it's alcohol, whatever it is. And people who go through that program, it's a very tough program. It's at least six weeks long, again, where they meet, they go to court every week and meet with recovery specialists and really need to commit to turning their lives around. Today was yet another graduation of people who have gone through the program, and when you see them come up and receive their certificates and their commitment to a new life for themselves, it helps just make everybody's day beautiful. So, I hope those stories help make your day beautiful, and I hope you also have a wonderful, wonderful holiday. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Councilwoman Selly?
Good evening, everybody. I just have one thing to say, and that's to wish everybody a happy holiday and a happy and healthy 2023, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mayor Pallone?
Thank you, Council President. So, I want to, again, just congratulate Sergeant Sheldrick, and I want to thank you, Director, and the staff and officers for putting this ceremony together tonight. We hope to continue doing this of honoring all of our new sworn officers here at council meetings, and that was a great suggestion by the Director here. I also want to say that the city and the city council introduced an ordinance this evening to purchase the Oliver Byron Firehouse with the plan of creating a new Long Branch Fire and History Museum. This historic building, which dates back to 1891, it's on the corner, it's at 46 Atlantic on the corner of Ocean Avenue, sorry? Oh, it's up there. So, that's the current building, and that's the original building when it was opened in 1891. But in any event, as, the city of Long Branch actually is the oldest fire department in Monmouth County, and we're thrilled to create this new museum. It'll be dedicated to the bravery and service of all the firefighters that devoted their lives to the protection and safety of our city residents for the last 150 years. It was important for us to preserve this building with all the rich history it holds with our fire department, and we did not want to see this torn down or to lose it, lose this important piece of our history. So, our hope is that the museum will be here forever and for many generations to learn from, and we plan to open at least part of it by the end of next year or during, you know, 2023. So, we're very excited about that. I also wanted to mention that we also received a new $774,000 grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation to support motorists and pedestrian improvements on Westwood Avenue in the Transit Village area to ultimately promote the use of public transportation while simultaneously improving safety features in our neighborhoods. And you may remember, last year, we improved the whole Third Avenue area there on the east side of the railroad tracks. We received another grant for a half a million dollars, which will improve the west side, and this is an expansion beyond that to Chelsea Avenue of this, you know, important road improvements. On the holiday note, we have a holiday home decorating contest going on right now. Many of yous remember it for years and years. It was discontinued during COVID. But check our website at longbranch.org to find out how to participate. I see that our chief of the fire department is here. Santa Claus will be coming to town on the fire truck this Saturday, the 17th, starting at 11 o'clock. It's always a big hit. It rides throughout the entire city, and I think that schedule is on the, is on the website as to when and where it will be at a given time. And again, as everyone else did, I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, and happy holidays, and all the best health to you and your families, and success in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pallone. I first would like to thank everyone for attending this evening. Reverend Gibson, thank you for your participation as well. I wanted to mention something because I feel it's needed, and I wanted to bring up the fact that our mission statement for the mayor and city council says that we will treat everyone with respect and expect the same in return. At our last meeting, the work of the city clerk's office was referenced as being done by three innocent little girls. Comments like this against the city employees, members of the city boards and commissions, and our residents are unacceptable. We apologize to our employees for the disrespect that they were shown. We know how hurtful it is. You are amazing women, and we truly appreciate all that you do. And with that, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday and a healthy one, and hope to see you all in two weeks. Thank you for coming. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Oh, good, good.
I would like to.